All right, we're going to go ahead and call the new order. We can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you need a little call, yeah?
The order?
Here.
Noonan?
Here.
Black?
Here.
Lautner?
Present.
Carlson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Nixon?
Here.
Cad?
I think it was a yes.
Griswold?
Yes, here.
Trumble?
Here.
All right, Erv, grab a form. Before I move on to consideration of agenda, I was asked to address this according to, I guess, new guidelines that were set out by MDHHS yesterday, Trudy just passed on via an email requesting that all those present at board meetings, I guess the new order is requiring people to wear a face mask throughout the entire meeting, so obviously that excludes, or doesn't exclude, like officials, but they're, obviously they're elected, they can do as they wish. But I guess I would respectfully request everybody here that we would all wear masks throughout the entire meeting if possible. All right, if not, look for consideration of agenda. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda before us?
Have we moved it to be approved as presented?
All right, motion has been made, is there support?
Support, Casey?
Motion's been made by Linda Lautner, supported by Mr. Noonan, to approve the agenda as presented in a discussion. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Next, we'll move on to conflict of interest. Do we have anybody on here that has a conflict of interest regarding what's on the agenda tonight? All right, not, we'll move on to public comment. We'll give it about a minute for public to call in, number is 231-256-8109. We'll give it a quick 30 seconds to a minute to see if anybody called in. All right, not, we'll move on to staff comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the CIP again. There weren't any new items to add, so there's just kind of some minor updating.
What is the CIP?
The capital of proven?
Thanks.
Program?
Program?
Yeah.
Okay. So it should be ready for your review next month?
Next month, okay. Yeah, and for the new members, that's always, that's a program that we address here in the County Planning Commission. They're pretty much, any enhancements or improvements done by any county departments, we get to review it and then we pretty much grade it in order that we want to, you know, that we see the county board of commissioners to address it, address the problem and stuff, so we do it in order, not necessarily a guidebook that the county board of commissioners has to follow, but just kind of, we break it down and simplify it and stuff, so.
That's something that's how it goes.
Yeah, so obviously, I don't think there was any, any new requests this time around, so it's pretty much just putting in what was done previously to approve that and send it on, so. We'll address it next meeting. Anything else?
No.
All right. Not, we're up to the consideration of the March 23rd, 2021 meeting minutes.
I've got a comment, this is Nate Griswold.
Yes, go ahead.
I had sent Gail and Trudy a message yesterday that my, my, I was misquoted in the, how I, what I'm, the statement I made about short-term rentals in the commissioner's comment section, and I sent them language that was more accurate to what I had described.
All right, do you want to read that off just for the rest of the commissioners?
Yes, sure. I knew you were going to ask it, I'm trying to find that email. Basically, basically it says that I am, I do not think that short-term rentals are good for the county, and that's the opposite of what I feel. I feel that short-term rentals are a great thing if properly implemented and a great source of income for both the county tax assessors as well as community members.
Oh, I see, did you find it? It's.
Right, yeah, it's on the last page.
Last page, yeah. He doesn't believe S T Rs are good for the county. So how did you want that changed, Nate? Does it say you do believe they're good for the county?
Do you want me to bring up the email? I mean, it's already.
Yeah, Mr. Griswold, I'll have our staff here, Gail Meyer, read off what you sent.
Okay, this is how it should read. Griswold asked if this body makes resolutions in support of different measures. He believes short-term rentals are a good thing for this county and that they can provide a much-needed income stream into our community. He would like to see a resolution in support of incentive-based and creative zoning. The order stated their job is more to make recommendations and review. Gail said it might be a better idea for the planning commission to hold a training session on this type of zoning to educate townships. Griswold offered to assist with setting up this training.
All right, so that's, is that the language that you're understanding, Mr. Griswold?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions on the minutes for us? If not, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Can you motion to approve the minutes?
All right, motion's been made by Trumbull's, or by Mr. Black, to approve the March 23rd, 2021 meeting minutes as amended. Is there any further discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right, next up, we have new business regarding to Leland Township - signs. Mr. Patmore requested that he speak before we have staff reports. So, Mr. Patmore, I'll give you the floor to address that.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm Steve Patmore, the zoning administrator for Leland Township, and I just want to give you a brief introduction. We currently have a sign ordinance, a standalone, separate sign ordinance, that's a township ordinance, and it doesn't meet the content-neutral requirements established by the United States Supreme Court, and it's also, hasn't been upgraded since 1991. So, our planning commission's been working on this for at least two years, probably longer, and on upgrading. And they want to put it in the zoning ordinance instead of the separate township police power ordinance. And where they started at, they looked at the Leland County Model Sign Ordinance, which was done by you folks, you did a great job. We looked at Bingham Township and Elmwood Township standards. We actually had a planning commission member tour the township and created a list of all the existing signs and the sizes, and then we used that as our, to help with our decisions. And then we've been monitoring the size and number of political signs. And then we had members of our planning commission incorporate dark sky standards into the new language. So I think the biggest thing is we, we, when I say we, the planning commission didn't feel that we have a current sign problem. We just wanted to upgrade to be, to meet the Supreme Court decision. And, you know, we didn't feel we had a problem with business signs or political signs, and they wanted to make things workable to the community. And I did want to point out that these standards don't apply to the village of Northport, which has their own sign standard. So we, we had a public hearing in, starting in January of 2020, and it extended into February and March because our commissioners kept thinking of things. We had very little public comment, which, actually, very little. So, our public, I think we thought the county planning commission is, is a good set of eyes that are ready to look at this. I think we realize it needs a little more work. We want to get some more public input and, and I, I noticed in something Trudy sent us, there's a sign workshop sponsored by MSU in May coming up, so we'll look on that. I think we'll have another public hearing on this, but we're very, very interested in your comments and moving forward on this, so with, that's my introduction.
All right, thank you, Steve. We'll move on to the staff report on that, I guess, Gail, I guess he'll take over and just kind of give us their analysis of.
Sure, this request was received on March 23rd for the test portion of it, and then on April 22nd, we received your request to review the memo in the township planning commission minutes. And the requested action was to review and comment on proposed amendment to the proposed addition of new sign regulations for Leland Township zoning ordinance. The public hearing was held on January 23rd, 2020, and then continued on February 13th, 2020. It's noted that staff could not obtain copies of the minutes from these prior meetings prior to this report being completed. And then, the public hearing was continued on March 12th of 2020. Following the public hearing, the township planning commission passed a motion to forward the amendment to the Leland County Planning Commission for review and comments. And then, skipping ahead to Section 5 under history, we've included the following section summarizes the ruling by the Supreme Court regarding signage, the formation of a Leland County sign advisory group, and development of a model draft sign ordinance. Then, under Section 6, staff comments. Leland Township is proposing adding sign regulations to its township zoning ordinance and rescinding the sign ordinance 91-1, a minute through June 15th, 2016. Ordinance 91-1 is known as a police power ordinance, or just called an ordinance. Zoning and police power ordinances are not the same. A zoning ordinance must be based on a master plan. Police power ordinances do not have such a requirement. A police power ordinance does not regulate the use of land, it regulates an activity. A zoning ordinance regulates use of land, and it might also regulate an activity. There is a difference in the process to adopt a police power ordinance versus a zoning ordinance. It is noted by Leland Township that they have been discussing sign standards for a while now, due to the fact that the current sign ordinance is not content neutral. And the township planning commission felt that new standards should be incorporated into the zoning ordinance rather than a township police power ordinance. The proposed amendment will add Article 22 signs to the Leland Township zoning ordinance and rescind the existing Leland Township sign ordinance 91-1. Staff note, Leland County repealed the Leland County zoning ordinance in 2020 and worked with his attorney on the process. The process to repeal the ordinance had to follow the same process to adapt it. To complete this step, an ordinance to repeal the county zoning ordinance was prepared, adopted, and published. If Leland Township wishes to rescind or repeal its sign ordinance, they should verify the process to complete this step. The proposed Leland Township sign regulations are quite similar to the regulations proposed by the sign advisory group in 2016. The township has added regulations on illuminations of signs and non-informing signs. And then, in Section 22.5, under B, we've just pointed out a possible typo. And continuing on, the township is commanded for proposing changes to their sign regulations in order to be compliance, to be in compliance with content-neutral regulations. Prior to adapting sign regulations as part of the township zoning ordinance, township officials may wish to sign up for the Michigan Sign Regulation Guidebook Training, so we call that May 12. This session is for being presented by the Michigan State University Extension. Recent court decisions further reduce local zoning authority to limit on and off-premise signs, commercial and non-commercial speech. And the advancement of digital sign technology presents new challenges, and we have provided the website for more information and registration on that. With regard to public hearings, it is important to make sure proper procedure is followed. Staff did not have the minutes from Jan, from the January or February Township Planning Commission minutes prior to the staff report being completed. It is staff's understanding that a public hearing can be recessed if the time and place is announced during the initial meeting. If the January public hearing was recessed to February and then to March, this step would need to occur at each subsequent public hearing. If not, the required notices may be required again for the next hearing. Also, public hearings should be noted in the minutes as open, closed, and then action, motion is recorded. The minutes from the March meeting show the public hearing opened and a motion passed, but does not show the public hearing being closed. The motion should occur after the public hearing is closed. Then, if there are any questions regarding proper procedures being followed, the township may wish to check with their legal counsel on this issue prior to the township board taking final action.
Thanks, Gail. With that, we'll move on to commissioner comments and questions, if they have any. We'll start with Mr. Noonan.
Nothing right now.
All right, Mr. Black?
Nothing here.
All right, Commissioner Lautner?
Just a clarification, Steve. So, on Section 22.5B, that has maximum size of 12 square feet with a maximum height of four feet. Is that how that's going to read?
Can you say that again, Linda, I'm sorry?
Max, maximum size of 12 square feet with a maximum height of four feet?
Are you talking 20, 22.5B?
Yes. I think staff said you take out the size of eight, and, and it should be 12 square feet? Because you can have that four. Usually they're wider than they are tall, and if they use four feet long by two feet gives you maximum allowed, I know in some townships, but.
Are you talking about the portable signs? I'm sorry.
I, I do not know if it's portables. I don't know.
Okay, I'll.
It is.
Whatever's in the staff report, I will take in the, take that back to the planning commission if, if there's any, if there's any misunderstanding. We want it to be clear.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, it will be.
All right, Mr. Carlson?
Nothing.
All right, Mr. Miller?
A couple of things. Where in the definition of mural, if it says no written text or convey a commercial message? So, if it was a picture of sleeping bears and it says sleeping bear on it, that's a sign? That's not a mural?
Well, it depends on if sleeping bear is a business or not. I think that's the judge, that's what they meant on that. They were thinking about those barn, like quotes on a barn, big things, that they didn't want them to be construed as a sign. So I guess I'd answer your question is, if, if sleeping bear is the business that's there, then yes, it would be conveying a message, but if it's just sleeping bear unrelated to the property as a mural, I, I wouldn't consider that a sign.
But you'd consider written text, which would be prohibited as, as murals defined.
Yeah, that, that's a good note, and maybe that, that needs to be clear. It's not, it's not their intent to regulate art. I got, I got your message, I'll take that back to them.
Okay, yeah. And then, when we go under definition, under flags, if a flag, signs exempt from regulations, the flag has words on it, is it a sign?
No. Our, our planning commission went, spent a lot of time on this, and their decision was, is we don't have a problem with flags, so a flag is exempt.
So if I hung a bed sheet and called it a flag, it could say anything it wanted on it and be a commercial sign?
They made that decision because they didn't want to get into a, I mean, you could have an open flag, you could have a United States, they didn't want to get into, because that gets into content, you know, a flag, if you have to read the flag to decide what kind of sign it is, then it's not content neutral. So they made the decision, and I know they're, they're gonna, someday someone will, will abuse that, but they, they made a decision that they didn't want to even try to regulate flags.
Okay, unfortunately, I think it's, it's open for abuse, inviting it.
I'll, I'll take that back, but we've had that, we had a lengthy discussion on that.
Okay, and then when we go to the tables on 22.5A, and it says it's measured from the ground, under, further down, it talks about measuring a sign height from the ground. So, if you got the sign, if the bottom of the sign is up two foot above grade, then we're talking about a sign that actually is six foot tall maximum?
They added a note under 22.6 that said the height of sign is measured from the unaltered grade.
Yeah. So if I get, if I get two-foot of grass, two-foot-high grass in a field, I better have that sign two foot above grade if I want people to read it. So all of a sudden, my my eight-foot-high permanent sign is now a six-foot board? Yeah, I'm just asking if that's the intent.
You know, they wanted the measure from grade, not grass, and I guess they're assuming that if somebody wants their sign to be seen, they would be responsible for mowing the grass around it or keeping vegetation. But that, that's a good point, I will take that comment back.
And then, when we, we talk about illuminated signs, something I don't see, and maybe I missed it, is, you know, we talked about lumens, we talked about the halo illumination, all that, but flashing lights are not excluded. Or, you know, lights that are, have, I'm not sure what they're called, but the ones that kind of trail around a sign in terms of directional, you know, left to right, right to left, whatever.
I know there's a list of prohibited signs and changeable copy signs as part of that.
And I, I, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you because I'm going to take it back. I just saw flashing lights. Under A, it says for safety, no unshielded lights, and then it says flashing lights.
Okay.
Scrolling, it's, it's defined, I just missed it.
Okay.
That's that's it for me.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller, Mr. Nixon?
I didn't notice anything I questioned because the, the, I think the language was, was pretty clear. I'm impressed, though, that you had somebody from the township run around and look at all the signs in your township. That's, that guy should be, or gal should be commended. I just have a couple of small housekeeping chores, recognizing you haven't, you haven't made the final draft on that, but just to point him out that on the first page of your Article 22 signs, you've got a little quotation mark that doesn't need to be there at the beginning of that paragraph. And on the fol, and on the following page, almost four up from the bottom, changeable copy signs, there's a, italics used there, and that doesn't need to be there either. Other than that, I don't have any other remarks to make.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, Mr. Scott?
I just want to give a lot of, I want to commend the township for incorporating dark sky provisions. I think that's far-thinking for the future and really great. Otherwise, I have no nits to pick.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Griswold?
Yes, Tom, I'd like to second the question. That was another question that I, or one question that I had, because more and more flags are being used for political purposes, and I know that political signs are temporary with a maximum amount of days, and a flag is easily, if it's exempt, can be a political sign that's year-round.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I just know our town, we had a lot of discussion on freedom of speech and flags, and so I, I will take that, that's a good comment, I'll take that back.
Okay, I just don't understand the difference between that and a sign that's in the yard. Just same thing to me.
Right.
I have no other comment besides that.
I couldn't hear that, Mr. Griswold, what did you say?
Apologize, that, that's it, that's my only comment.
All right, Mr. Trumble?
I have nothing.
Nothing? All right. I will just add to that, I thought the, the draft here was very well done. I did want to concur with staff on their report where, you know, about the public hearing, that it didn't seem to be, motion was made, or it wasn't closed, I guess, and then a motion made after that, so I will concur with staff on that, that I caught that as well. So that was just a simple, basic question I had on that as well. But other than that, it was a well-done, put-together document, in my opinion. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, and not, I'd like to have a motion to forward this on to the Leland Township?
So?
Or.
All right, motion's made by Commissioner Lautner, in support of Mr. Black, to forward the Leland Township sign draft ordinance, and along with commissioner comments, back to Leland Township, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right, thank you, Mr. Patmore, appreciate you being on and answering the questions.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you, good night.
Good night.
All right, next item we have on the agenda. All right, next item we have on the agenda is our IDB, Under New Business Discussion, Training Topics for Fall Session. I talked with Trudy briefly on this. Obviously, we didn't have a spring session this spring, but we'd like to do a fall session this fall. And a lot of that's for new members, it's a session where we do training series for like a local township, municipalities. And I think Trudy added a document in the back there with like five bullet points, or six, I see. Some different ideas, I guess, that we can send to the education committee for them to start tossing around and seeing what kind of fall session we'd like to have. So somebody wanted this on the agenda to try to get a feel for the rest of the commissioners on here to see what what kind of ideas that we want to send to the education committee for them to look at. I'm going to go through, and I'd like to just have your top two bullet points on here that you'd like to have referred to the education committee for a fall session, just to give them an idea on to start on. Or if you feel like there's not enough on here and you have another option, that as well. But I'd just like to go through here and just kind of get a feel from the rest of the commissioners as to what kind of fall session training that they would like to see, so.
It's kind of a question, Steve.
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
So in considering these topics, are we, you know, picking what, you know, what interests us or what we think we need? Or are we, are we targeting which specific group we're going to be targeting first? And then picking a topic that we think may be pertinent to that?
I guess what I'd like to get tonight is just your top two choices for a fall session. Obviously, the fall session will only be doing one educational series at that fall session. So just the top two, and pretty much through that, at that session, we'll bring somebody either from MSU, either Mary Riley, or somebody depending what kind of educational series we have to do and just come in and have them do a session just on that specific. No, it'd be for the whole county. It'd be, so we invite, I think the staff usually invites all township planning commission members and township board members.
Okay, I get it.
Training and anybody else that wishes to attend that.
All right, thank you.
It's an educational series for pretty much all appointed and elected officials in the county. All right, Mr. Noonan, I guess I'll start with you. I guess your top two choices for the education committee to look at at least? Is Mr. Noonan still on or not?
Sorry, I'm still here, I'm having some computer problems. I need to get my circle back to me if you would, please.
Okay, all right, Mr. Black, what was this to you?
Well, I don't see it here, but I have some real strong feelings about the short-term rental situation here in this county.
Okay.
I don't know if it's possible to bring somebody in that for many of these states that are dealing with in a far larger scale than we are up here in Leelam County, in my opinion, and that'd be the state of Florida, where short-term rentals is major, that's a major income source for that state and for many counties and areas. And you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned with the townships that are cutting out entirely, I'd rather see them go to a position of maybe area within their whatever, but I, the topic, there's got to be a resolution where middle road, I think there is, but I'd like to know more about it.
Okay, so that'd be one.
That's one. Then number two, what I'm seeing here is more, more information on solar.
Okay. All right, so first off, can be some sort of short-term rental session and then solar? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right, Mr. Lautner, what are your top two choices, I guess?
Well, of, of the ones listed, my first one would be the farm market. Generally accepted agricultural management practices. But I had been thinking before that I read this, I was thinking more along the line of perhaps how to fit value-added businesses into your community. So I think those two could kind of go hand in hand. So maybe you might have a value-added business, but it's not necessarily agriculture, on agricultural piece of land or something zoning agricultural, where can we fit those in? So that would be probably my first one. And the second one, just because I think it struck me interested, is the crime, crime prevention through environmental design. This is kind of an interesting concept I think could interest a lot of people, because that's kind of my drive, is what might interest a lot of people. And then at some point, I thought we could do, you know, marijuana, or whatever they want to call it, the after effects, or two years in or four years in. So at some point, I just think that's more we should consider. Where are we with that process now that we're two years into it, or does that need? It may, may be a mood issue totally, but that's just something to consider. So anyway, those are my top two, value-added crime.
All right, sounds good. Ms. Carlson?
I like the middle housing. We've got a housing need reflected in lack of workers. And I also like the solar. I think they're both good issues.
All right. Mr. Miller?
I, well, the farm market, I think, is something that needs a lot more definition in this town, in this county. Why'd you say that? And then I would take solar and probably expand it to alternative energy rather than just limiting it to solar.
All right. All right, Mr. Nixon?
I'd like to offer an additional topic because, one, it's, it's generating some significant interest in our community, and it has to do with noise ordinances. With the increase in, the influx of short-term rentals, special land use permits, wedding venues, wineries, cideries. The activity in our township within the rural community is, is increasing to the point where our township is going to seriously be considering establishing a noise ordinance that is a police power ordinance rather than trying to address it through the zoning ordinance itself. It really begs the question on enforcement, and in what manner and what form our local prosecutor, our county prosecutor, our sheriff's department would be of assistance to that if we were to go the direction of a police ordinance and, if not a misdemeanor through our township by issuing tickets. But I think the topic is, is a relevant one. It has the potential of gaining some interest, I would think, as our townships and our county expands the amount of outdoor activities that are occurring, particularly in the summer months. So I would offer that one as one, and my second one would certainly be to, to understand the GAMPs, the farm market language better than, than I currently do. And I think there's a breadth of interest in that, simply because I know, again, our township, eighty percent of our township is agricultural in Sutton Bay. And I think that topic is always going to be relevant to, to.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Mrs. Stott?
I would go with solar. I think there's going to be a lot of investment opportunities in it. And I, so I think it's going to become a big issue in, in the ways we can accommodate solar here. The other, I do love the noise ordinance issue, but I really think that's going to work better as a police power issue. I think we're going to need it, but I, I see it as more a police power option. So my other option would be farm market.
All right. All right, Mr. Griswold?
Can you hear me? I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. All right, and I apologize, I'm not seeing the list that everyone's referencing, is that within the packet?
Yes, it was on page twenty-five or twenty-seven.
Okay, I, I missed that, let me, I getting onto that real quick here. But I do like the, the talk, discussions of the short-term rentals for sure and/or alternative housing options in general. As a broad subject, I think more creative zoning would be a broader subject of one of my options there. And that's looking at everything from short-term rentals to higher density and accessory dwelling units and other items like that, and how that could benefit the community or the county. And then with, along the lines of solar, I like the idea of creating that, you know, calling that alternative energy because small micro wind generation is another very viable option that people should, we should be better educated upon. But I think one thing that I would add to this is some type of workshop on the implementation of policies within rural township. Meaning, how can we help the townships better understand how to implement, let's say, maybe a smart growth policy guidebook or something along that line? So that they can maybe reference that if they're being challenged about denser growth. For instance, I think that some of the townships where there is villages, a denser, denser development will help preserve the rural character of our community if we put more homes where there already are homes in, in a village setting or in more of a so that, that's, and then finally also something about diversity in immigration, something along those lines. I haven't really thought through that, but that was another item that I think is really important. Something about, you know, accepting diversity and how that's implemented through policy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Mr. Trumble?
Out of these, I think the middle housing and the solar, those two finish this meeting off.
Okay. Perfect, I'll circle back to Mr. Noonan.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, sorry about, sorry about that earlier. For me, the, the top two, the top one kind of tied right now, because interestingly enough, I've fielded several calls on both of these topics, signs and farm markets. In the last ten days, I've fielded probably three or four calls on each one of them. The farm, never really used to be a hot topic, I think COVID has created unforeseen issues with that, because there's such a demand for local produce and meat and such things. There's a lot of people calling me wanting references and how to navigate all this stuff. And then the same thing with the signs. This last election seems to have spurred a lot of different sign issues. Some of them people just being picky, other ones have some clout behind them, but those are the top two for me, are the most active, I guess, in, in my life and on my end here in Empire Township.
All right. Perfect, appreciate everybody's input on that. I guess the initial ones that I was just looking at, obviously we have a sign, I guess, presentation coming up here in May, for those that got the email from Trudy. I feel like May covered that a lot. I guess the two, the top two, I, I felt like just initially looking at it was obviously the housing one and then solar, which is, I think solar and alternative energy is going to be one of the main things that's going to be hit the calendar here in the future. So based on everybody's input in here, it looks like we have solar and the GAMPs that are the top two for the education committee to look at. So obviously, all these comments will be taken there, but, and Trudy helps at you, get, get you started on that. But I think you got a good, good start here is the kind of what the, what the commission is looking for, I guess. So should, she'll help you out on that, and she'll get it set up for you and stuff, but yeah, I think it'll be a good start on that. Anybody, any additional comments on that or no? All right, awesome. Next up, we'll go on to reports. The education committee, which there looks like there was no meeting. Number two was Housing Action Committee, that meeting was canceled in April, it looks like. Next up is Parks and Recreation Committee.
Yeah, we met last week, got some things going on. We're looking at doing some trail cleanup at Miles Cameron. Went out for some bids on that, and we've got some large, larger than expected numbers to try and wrangle with and navigate and figure out exactly what we want to do there. That was really the, the heaviest topic or the biggest topic. And we're, there was, we were approached by Glen Lake Schools to maybe start a discussion some sort of lease or working out something for some new fields at Miles Cameron, like for Glen Lake Schools and for the public, kind of a combination partnership. That is just verbal stuff, we haven't even had a meeting on it yet, but it was, it was brought up. And Veronica Valley Kids Fishing Day, we moved forward with purchasing fish for that, hoping that open and ready to go as far as COVID goes. And that's about it.
All right, when's, when's that fishing day scheduled at Veronica Valley?
Melinda, what is the exact date? It's the end of June.
June twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Twenty-seventh, Sunday, yeah.
All right.
Bring your gray kids, bring your kids, it's a great event.
It is a, it is an amazing event, and it's and it's touted by the DNR as one of the best of kids fishing days that they help with in the state of Michigan.
Awesome, yeah, I always see a lot of positive, positive things, a lot of kids show up at that, especially in the paper and stuff, so it's good. Awesome, anybody any questions for Mr. Noonan? All right, if not, we'll move on to item number four, report from different members attending either township or village meetings or other trainings. Mr. Noonan?
Nothing right now.
All right, Mr. Black?
I didn't do any like.
All right, Mr. Lautner?
No, I'm hoping to do this sign one though, in a couple days if it works, yeah.
All right, Ms. Carlson?
Nothing, true.
All right, Mr. Miller?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Mr. Nixon?
Nothing at this point, no.
All right, Ms. Stott?
Nothing to report from me.
All right, Mr. Griswold?
Nothing to report.
All right, Mr. Trumble?
I've been doing the Michigan State University Extension, so the Citizen Planner program.
Oh, wow.
And I've been enjoying that, so I'm halfway through the program and learning a lot.
Oh, good, wow, I saw that was training out, I'm glad to see you're doing it, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Good. All right, next up, we have communications. Obviously, that's in the back of our packet, pages twenty-six and twenty-seven. Gail, is there anything you want to add to that?
I don't really can do, no.
Nothing, all right. Looks like there's a housing ready program. It's at the end of our packet, it looks like, I'm assuming there's still time to register for that, but if you go on the agenda online, you can click to register for that, for that training or that program, I guess I should say, for anybody that's interested, so. Now, if you have any questions, I'd recommend just reaching out to Trudy or Gail on that regard. All right, next up, we have our final public comment. Number is two-three-one-two-five-six-eight-one-zero-nine. We'll give it about thirty seconds to a minute to see if anybody called in. All right, doesn't sound like it. So we'll move on to staff comments. Anything else? None? All right, we'll move on to phone comments from commissioners. Mr. Trumbull, we'll start with you this time.
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Griswold?
No, sir, no comments.
All right, Mrs. Todd?
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right, Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Miller?
I'm fine, thank you.
Ms. Carlson? All good?
Good.
Mr. Lautner?
I don't think I had anything to bring.
All right, Mr. Black?
The only comment I would make would be along the signage. I moved up here from Muskegon County, and I have driven all over this county. And I personally commend most of what I'm seeing is if I need to find something, the signage is there. And I do spend time in Florida, which is a nightmare to try to find anything with their sign rules. They have made it very difficult for the commercial industry to locate themselves with signs. It's very hard in Florida, and I hope we never get like them. I like what I'm seeing up here. It's very easy to find this.
All right. Awesome, Mr. Noonan?
Nothing further.
All right, I just wanted to thank staff for their input on setting up this meeting and for the hard work they put on, and wishing everybody a good spring. And with that, well done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, have a good night.
I did call it, Tim.
What's that?
I did call it, Tim. I can't do what I want. That's I knew I wouldn't be able to. I was pretty sure.
Yeah, I wondered.
It's the commercial thing.
Okay. I was really looking for a meeting or something so that I could make connections better with me.
And I don't think they would object to that, because I'm not making
Well, yeah, I would think they can.
No.
It is, I
I would like to use that area for that.
To be honest with you, I'm doing it, you know.
It's definitely never going to fly, and I won't pursue.
Yeah.
But the last thing in the world I would need would be if you fly. Just think, you know, who are you going to work and staff and trade with? And then tell them, hey, you got to come and get them.